At 7 o'clock, I'd like to call the meeting to order. Invite everyone to please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Kathy, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, Jim Dambek.
Here.
Steve Nelson.
Here.
James Shiloh.
Here.
Julian Davey.
Here.
Michael DeVito.
Here.
Eric Jones.
Present.
Kristen Ren. Eric Formes, present.
Are there any changes to the agenda as proposed? We do want to remove item number 7.02, which is the abatement request. There's more information that'll be coming to us on that, so we want to see that before we vote. So we'll strike that from the agenda. Any other changes? Is there a motion to approve, or I'd rather adopt, the agenda as amended?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as proposed?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, roll call.
Ren?
Yes.
Shiloh?
Yes.
Davey?
Yes.
DeVito?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Dambek?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Next item then is Board Spartan Awards. And the first set of awards is recognition of young authors. So I'm going to come down to the microphone in front there. The first young author that we want to recognize this evening, the award winner is Andy Weimer. If you would, is Andy here? Let's see if we can... Let me take this. There we go. So what grade are you in?
First grade.
First grade. Who's your teacher?
Mrs. Doty.
And who's here with you this evening? Is your mom or dad here?
My mom.
Can we have her stand up and get a round of applause for supporting you? Who is that that you have with you?
Rocky.
Rocky. And Rocky is the feature of your story, right? He's featured in your story called Rocky's Adventure, right? And tell us a little bit about Rocky.
Um, well, he's my stuffed animal.
And what's his adventure like?
Um, well, he goes to the library and he goes and sees stuff.
And did this really happen? Did you and Rocky go to the library together? You just made it up. Rocky goes on a journey and he goes out in, across the yard and across a bridge and to the library and picks out a book. And then where does he wind up in the very end?
At his bed.
And what's he doing there?
Sleeping.
With?
What'd he say?
With?
Me.
With you. Because your favorite thing to do, and his favorite thing to do, is what?
Snuggle together.
Snuggling together. So congratulations to you. It's a wonderful book. And this book is a touch and feel book, so you probably can't see. There are all kinds of touch and feel kind of things in here. Leaves and what else? Oh, some rough paper and some...
Bricks.
Some feathers, all kinds of interesting things because it's not just a book, it's a touch and feel book. So you did a great job. So congratulations. And here's an award for you. It's a plaque. Okay? Our next winner is Ava Signarella. And Ava, are your mom and dad here with you?
Yes.
Do you want to tell them to stand up and get an applause? Did they help you when you were writing the book?
Yes.
So this is a story about Maisie. And Maisie is someone we would call a perfectionist, right? Maisie likes everything to be perfect. And Maisie is perfect. She can't stand anything going wrong. So she's the best student, she's the best gymnast, she's the best at everything she does, right?
Yes.
And what happens to her?
She realizes she doesn't have to be perfect.
And how did she realize that?
She makes a mistake.
She makes a mistake. And what kind of mistake does she make?
A big one.
She's the best gymnast in her group and she's really worried about the gymnastics competition, right? But she gets on the high beam and what happens?
She falls.
Yeah, she falls off. And when she falls off, she thinks to herself, oh no, my team is going to lose because I wasn't perfect. So then what does she do?
She realizes she doesn't, she doesn't have to be perfect.
And what does she do?
She gets back on the beam.
She gets back up on the beam and she finishes the competition. And when she gets off, she has a big smile on her face. She makes a great landing off the beam. And then they wait to see what the result will be from the competition and what happens?
They get second place.
And what do they say to her teammates?
Great job.
Yeah. And that's when she learns that it's okay to make a mistake, right? And a lot of times, we can learn from our mistakes, right? So sometimes we learn more from our mistakes than when we're perfect. But, so are you perfect all the time?
No.
So you made a few mistakes once in a while?
Tons.
Me too. And who's your teacher?
Ms. Meisner and Dr. Clavitt.
Great. Well, thank you very much. And I have a plaque for you. And your book is also beautifully illustrated as well as written. And Anna, your book is pretty long. And it's also beautifully illustrated. Did you draw the parrot?
Yeah.
And what's his name?
Uh, Tico.
Tico.
And are your mom and dad here with you tonight?
Yeah.
Yeah. Stand up.
I think they really enjoyed this part. So the parrot's name is Tico. And tell us a little bit about Tico.
Uh, he's albino and there's not a lot of other white parrots like him.
And so what, he's an albino, he has no color, he has just white feathers. And all the other parrots have beautifully colored feathers. And they're kind of mean to him, right?
Yeah.
And what does he try to do?
He tries to go somewhere he's not supposed to without permission.
And what happens when he does that?
He gets trapped and taken to a zoo.
Yeah, he gets trapped. And after his mother warned him not to do things like that, he sneaks out of the house to try to find somebody like him or go to a place he wants to go to. And he does find somebody like him. And when he goes to meet that person, that parrot, I guess I should say, then he gets trapped. And they take him to a zoo. And what happens to him at the zoo?
He gets put in a cage.
And at first, he's put in a small cage and then they put him in a big cage and he goes on display for all the people at the zoo. But what does he notice?
Uh, the lock is a lock he's seen before and he knows how to escape it.
And so then what does he do?
He escapes and finds his way home.
And then everything ends with a happy ending because his mom and his friend that he met, who's just like him, also an albino parrot, they're all there to greet him and it all ends happily ever after. And his mother says what?
I'm never letting you leave the house again.
Yep, mothers tend to do that sometimes. So who's your teacher?
Mrs. Colzo.
Okay. Well, congratulations to her too. But I have a plaque here for you. And again, this is a great book. It was nice to read it and a beautiful illustration of a parrot. I wish I could draw like that. I wish I could draw half as good as that. So congratulations and thank you. Claire Hua? Sorry, next. Claire, did I mispronounce your name? This is a really long book. This story was 21 pages, no spaces between the lines and tiny font. It took a long time to read this book. And the name of this is Alive. And are your mom and dad here with you or you want to tell them? Stand up.
Stand up.
This is, this is a book set in the future, right? I was trying to figure out what years do you think this is when you place these characters in this story?
I don't know, probably like a long time.
A long time in the future because a 2054 car is a vintage car in this, in this, in this story. And boy, a lot of things happen in here. It's really, it would be hard to give a really good summary. But do you want to give it a shot and see if you can summarize the story for the folks here?
Okay, I'll try. So there's a girl named Callie Tombleton. Her parents got divorced in the summer and she's moving to a new middle school because she was originally in elementary school. And so she, on her first day of school, she misses the school bus. So then she takes her aunt's car and drives by herself. She doesn't have a permit. And then she gets lost by the factories that are built by her house. And then, so she goes to the factory because she's curious and she doesn't know what to do because her phone's dead. And well, she's lost, so she goes into the factory and then someone mistakes her for someone that's working there. And so she goes inside and finds out some stuff that she's not supposed to know, like, and she finds a room full of people, but not real, they just look like people and they're robots. And so she leaves terrified and then she runs away and the person that thought that she was her employer, he's going, he's mad, like, because he didn't know that she was just a regular student. And so she runs and then she hits her head and gets hurt and ends up in the hospital and her parents are there. And so, okay, I don't know if I could say all of this.
I told you it was long and complicated.
So at the hospital, her parents are there and then they're really confused, like, why were you at that factory? What were you doing? But she doesn't want to tell them what she knows because she's scared she's going to get in trouble for poking around. And so she goes back home and at home, she lives at her dad's and mom's house like every other week. And so she was at her dad's house and she has a grandpa who has gone crazy for some reason. And so she, she goes back to school and then there are a lot of new people, two best friends have betrayed her. She's really sad. So, and oh, there's another thing. On the first day of school, she missed, she missed a kind of testing called the Young Scholars something, the...
Exam.
Yeah, YSC, the Young Scholars Exam. And so she has to retake it. She meets this librarian, so she retakes the test. And then she goes to eat lunch and her backstabbing friends are there, so. And then she gets mad again, so she runs into a bathroom and then she cries. And then she overhears a lady on the phone who's come to supervise the YSCs talking about how they're going to capture her and how they've found her. So then she, she runs and she pretends she's sick. And then she gets to go home to her dad. Oh, and there was another guy, the guy that saved her from the factory, which is Dr. Busby, one of her dad's friends. And, okay, and so he calls Dr. Busby, well, he texts Dr. Busby because she doesn't know what to do and somehow he knows some stuff that she doesn't. Oh, wait, I left out of part with Dr. Busby.
You're doing fine. Tell them about what happens with grandpa.
Oh, and his grandpa isn't his grandpa, his grandpa's Dr. Busby, but in a different body because Dr. Busby is a robot. Because the YSC is all secretly a test that they take to find intelligent kids that can later become robots. And her grandpa actually has no human mind controlling him, so. And the organization people can control him and they tried to capture her. So she goes back to the factory and then they change her grandpa back.
And they change her into a robot?
Oh, yeah.
And they change her grandpa back. So that's 21 pages of story. It's a great story. How did you come up with that idea? It's just amazing.
I don't know. I guess I just started writing and then I kept going.
Wow, it really was a wonderful read. It took a while to read, but it was a wonderful read. And I love science fiction, so it was really, really a good genre for me. So who is your teacher?
Uh, I have a lot of teachers, but while I was writing it, my literature and English teacher was Mr. Crum. He's not here anymore because he was a substitute, but yeah.
And did he have input on this? Did he help you out at all?
He was gone by the time I finished.
Just gave you some guidance and left. Well, Claire, wonderful job and I really enjoyed your story and I hope you continue to write because it's really, really good. And I mean, it's almost like a book. It really is long. It's definitely like a novella. So you can, I mean, that would be one where you could have all kinds of sequels too and have all kinds of robots running around all over the place. So have you encountered any robots in your middle school?
Unfortunately not, but...
Well, stay away from them if you do. The next item on the agenda then would be our sports awards.
We've got a pretty good year at Sycamore High School for our athletics. So we're just going to start in the fall and work our way through the winter. We'll start with boys cross country. There's any boys cross country runners? Then come on down. The boys won the regional. They were state qualifiers. Their all-conference athletes were Naifal Harvey, Aiden Farrell, Nick Coker, Jake Rundell, and Ethan Sulphasberg. Girls cross country, they had, Lily Baker was a state qualifier. Lily's here. They just had a track meet, so she might still be down there. All-conference for girls cross country were Lily Baker, Haley King, and Olivia Kirby The next group we're going to recognize is the football team. And so if any of the football players want to come down front, they were... They made it to the semifinals of the state tournament. Members were Dawson Alexander, Nathaniel Altipeter, Brody Armstrong, Dominic Bills, Byron Blaze, Ryan Blanken, Ethan Bodie, Austin Broton, Gus Cambeer, Sam Carlson, Gable Carrick, Bo Cash, Jaden Cochran, Lincoln Cooley, Tristan Countryman, Kayden Cowser, Zach Crawford, Joey Coolada, Tyler Curtis, Zach Daring, Thatcher Friedrichs, Jackson Funderberg, Miles Galindo, Kayden Galto, Diego Garcia, Bert Goucher, Julian Govea, Brady Hollanddoner, Ryan Howison, Angel Hoyos, Matthew Johnson, Gabriel Jovanovic, Rick Kazumplick, Kayden Lattis, Alex Letito, Zach McCall, Eli Meyer, Jake O'Donnell, Addison Peck, Josh Pitts, Kyle Prebel, Joey Pulio, Matthew Rangle, Tommy Rosenow, Dalton Rutherford, Karsten Schau, Brandon Seabans, Charlie Siegel, Logan Stazarovski, Will Stewart, Ethan Storm, Kiefer Tarnoki, Cole Tegman, Connor Thorstens, Joey Ward, Connor Willier, Jack Wright, and Carter York. Earning all-conference were Dawson Alexander, Ethan Bodie, Sam Carlson, Lincoln Cooley, Zach Crawford, Jackson Funderberg, Eli Meyer, Ethan Storm, and Kiefer Tarnoki. For golf this year, they had one state qualifier in Brianna Shamoon. And our all-conference golfers were David Beatty, Brianna, and Lauren Cohn. Next up, we have boys soccer. Any of the soccer players? Boys soccer, they were the Interstate Eight champions. They were regional champions. Their team members were Trevor Blanken, Jules Breitenbach, Maxim Breitenbach, Kayden Carl, Nick Daring, Will Donahoe, Roman Friedrichs, Alec Garcia, Austin Gertis, Kyle Huber, Cameron Kreskell, Carson Matthews, Julio Milan, Kevin Munoz, Evan Radisic, Pierce Reinhardt, Charlie Roots, Ethan Royer, Noah Schmidt, Jacob Smith, Chase Thompson. And earning all-conference honors were Jules Breitenbach, Maxim Breitenbach, Kayden Carl, Roman Friedrichs, Alec Garcia, and Julio Milan. Tennis had a state qualifier in Ashley Olson. Earning all-conference for girls tennis, Abby Bordage, Jordan Block, Abby Golombieski, Good job, ladies. Earning all-conference in volleyball was Hannah Ekstrom, Faith Fierbach, and Kaylee Sharkey. Moving to the winner, we had boys bowling. All-conference bowlers were Evan Borowitz, Graham Hilgoss, and Tommy Rebelotti. For the dance team, they were IHSA state qualifiers. So if any of the dance team can come down. The dance all-conference ladies were Julian Goucher, Emily Kuhn, and Rebecca Dos Neves. And for some reason, I didn't get the list of ladies, so they're going to introduce themselves right now. So come on over, ladies, introduce yourself here.
I'm Julian Riley.
I'm Jenna Louie.
I'm Gwen Schroder.
I'm Julian Goucher.
I'm Emmy Kuhn.
I'm Bella Caputo.
I'm Tierney Balmar.
I'm Rebecca Dos Neves.
All right, ladies, nice job. For girls bowling, they were state qualifiers this year. Their all-conference athletes were Trista Fiorito, Brandy Stover, and Keira Wittenberg. Again, don't have the list of everybody who bowled at state, so come on over and introduce yourself.
I'm Brandy Stover.
I'm Keira Wittenberg.
I'm Maxine Lethro.
And I'm Caitlin Ryder.
All right, next up, we have the wrestlers. So the wrestlers were Interstate Eight conference champions. They were regional champions. Our, for wrestling, Brayden Pete. Brayden, wave your hand. Brayden finished second at the state tournament this year. Lincoln Cooley was sixth. Our state qualifiers were Zach Crawford and Jackson Funderberg. The gentlemen that are here tonight are Zach Crawford, Gable Carrick, Gus Cambeer, Brayden Pete, Trent Dumont, Johnny Buckheister, Zach Bogus, and Thomas Lynn. So congratulations, guys. The gymnastics team, are there any gymnasts here tonight? The gymnastics team, they won their regional, they won their sectional, and they placed third at the state meet. Place winners were, Maddie Keys was first in the uneven bars, the balance beam, and the all-around, and was fifth in floor exercise. And Annabella Simpson was third in the balance beam. And on their way by, they're going to introduce themselves here.
I'm Annabella Simpson.
I'm Caitlin Lisafeld.
Boys swimming's at their awards banquet, so I know they're not here. They were sectional champions this year. Jacob Graemer from Sycamore was ninth in the 50-yard freestyle at state and 11th in the 100 freestyle. Next up is girls basketball. Girls basketball were Interstate Eight conference champions, regional champions. They won the first sectional in school history. And the team members are Mallory Armstrong, Megan Brannan, Lexi Carlson, Evan Carrier, Faith Fierbach, Andrea Folk, Reese Hill, Sophie Klasik, Monroe McGee, Mallory Mori, Ella Shipley, and Jakaya Thompson. All-conference players were Lexi Carlson, Evan Carrier, Faith Fierbach, and Ella Shipley. And then this past weekend, Faith Fierbach wins the three-point state championship for class three. And then, last but not least, I think he left. Brody Armstrong was all-conference in boys basketball. We've had a really good fall, we've had a really good winter, and look to continue having a really good spring. So thank you all for recognizing our athletes.
It's always wonderful when we can celebrate awards like this. And congratulations to our students, and congratulations to their parents who have provided a lot of support and help along the way as well. So you're all entitled to a round of applause and appreciation. Next item would be audience to visitors. Is there anyone in the audience this evening who would like to address the board? Doesn't look like anyone does, so I will move on to the next item. Communications, correspondence, informational items, letters and newsletters. Certainly had those. Again, legislation by the armful. And we'll see what actually comes out as the sausage is being made. FOIA requests, there were, there were a couple. They've been, they've been answered, so. Committee reports.
SEF has their trivia night coming up on the 17th of next week, so you can put teams of four to 10 together and compete. I believe it's at the Regal Center. Food and beverage provided as well for your ticket, so go on the website, you can find all the information.
Is it a team competition, or is it individual?
It is four to 10 people on a team. And prizes will be awarded.
To the winners.
To the winners, yes.
Maybe to the losers, too. Any other committee reports?
Spartan Senate met last, oh, February 11th was the last meeting. And we discussed PE dress code, graduation requirements for students, shield testing, tabled the DeKalb-Sycamore Student Exchange, reviewed how students use Canvas, and they're bringing back the Mr. Spartan competition.
Oh, wow, okay.
Proud to say Interact is spearheading that, so that's going to be the topic of discussion on Friday. Really exciting stuff. And there was a riveting conversation on the PE dress code. Black and gold, gold and black, should it have Sycamore Spartans on it, should it not? General consensus was it should just be any black and gold and shouldn't be limited to having Sycamore Spartans on it, and should remain that way. So it was great to be a part of that conversation.
Was that parent-driven, or was that student-driven?
You know, it was a little bit of both. It's surprising. There were some students who were really taking ownership of the attire, but parents definitely expressed, because Ben Franklin used to be like, well, it's not Ben Franklin anymore, and it's not Sweet Earth anymore. It's now, it's something else. But yeah, so it's become increasingly difficult to find Sycamore branded. Yeah, so.
Other committee reports? Okay, we'll move on then to Assistant Superintendent for HR, Educational Programs Report.
Thanks, Jim. Tonight, we have the middle school team to present on everything going on in the middle school, so I'm going to invite Jim up to talk about his staff and what they have going on there.
Thanks, Jim.
Such a big crowd. I'll try my best. So the middle school report, this year, along with the last couple of years, we've really been working hard with our building coalition, our PLC coalition, on our, creating a mission statement, a building vision statement. And we started off just by getting data from our staff. And basically, here's the first report. The bottom right corner, we did, we did, we did a lot of asking the staff what they thought was, would be important for building a vision statement, and this is what we came up with. You'll see this in poster form all over our building. We have it in the classrooms. And from that, we used the district's mission statement. We figured it'd be the same all the way through, and then we built our own vision statement. And our vision statement ended up being, "Together we learn, together we grow, and together we are Spartans." And so then we decided we'd start working this year on remembering the why. Why do we do what we do? So with that, we put together quite a few of our reasons, and the biggest one I think we have on there is student success and opportunities. So we listed all of our different clubs and activities we have there, and then we put some pictures together. The first picture on the top there is the ACDA. That's our Midwest Regional Honors Choir. They performed in Chicago, there were four of them. We have a picture there of our sixth-grade orchestra, which, they have concerts all year long, and they should have another one coming up here pretty soon, because we have our spring concerts. Then our bottom picture is our conscious kids who went and did the radio show at WLVK last weekend, or last Friday. And they seemed to really enjoy that. We also had IMSA math competition, where our seventh and eighth-grade math students went to IMSA to compete against several other schools. And that's the picture on the left. The picture in the middle is a group of girls who signed up on a day they had off. We didn't have any school for them, and they came in and did a workshop through the Argon National Laboratories, and that was through the G-Force, our, our science and STEM program there, so that would be the top middle picture. Then we have peer pals over on the right, and they get to meet, and they just have a great time. Down at the bottom in the middle is our spelling bee. Those two students that were far right went on to the countywide spelling bee, which was here at the high school. And we also have student athletes. We've had a pretty good year, too. You'll notice, you'll get to meet a lot of our students, I think, at the next meeting. We still have wrestling to, to finish up their state. We had girls basketball just finish up this weekend, so we couldn't get them here. They won conference. Our cross country, you've already had up here. We have a picture there of the football team in the top right, and like I said, the wrestlers who've already won a regional are now going to be coming back through here. Hopefully, they do well this weekend in state. And then we had volleyball already through, too. So you'll get to meet a lot of our students like you did the high school students tonight, so we'll do ours, I do believe, probably next month. Another reason to remember the why is our, is our SEL and wellness. And we've, we've worked really hard this year with our, trying to keep our staff's social-emotional needs met as much as our students, because, believe it or not, it's been a tough year on staff, too. So during our last in-service day, we even had staff badminton during the lunch hours, and so we had staff in their plane. They had a great time there. Our MTSS committee did a service project where they brought in food, packaged it all, and took it over to the, the food pantry. That's the middle picture. And then the two far-right pictures on top of each other are the run-a-thon. And the kids really enjoy it. I don't know if you've ever had a chance to come out and see them run, but they, they spend the whole day out there, and we've had beautiful weather for it. We've had other times when it hasn't been so nice, but this last year was really nice. And then we go to our, our counselors. We recognized our counselors for their counseling week, and then social workers on there. And another thing we do for our theme Thursdays is we do that for those, for the students and the staff, is we pick a theme every, every week. And this one here that they took pictures of was just for the Olympics. You got to pick your favorite game or favorite country, and people dress, and they just have a good time. And I see the kids enjoying it along with the staff. To explain a little bit more, because we, we were told that you really wanted to hear what we're doing for SEL and what we're doing for things around the school, so we have a short little video here to explain that. This is, was put together by Mrs. Herkler, who is one of our counselors there. So if you could start that video for us, that would be great.
Hello, my name is Elizabeth Herkler, and I'm one of the school counselors at Sycamore Middle School. I work closely with Sarah Frankowicz and Mr. Claven and Justin Drennan, and this, I know, is part of our presentation tonight, so I thought I would share. I'm excited to have the opportunity to show you just a little bit of what we're doing here at the middle school in terms of social-emotional learning. This is my 12th year as a school counselor and my fourth year serving Sycamore School District 427. We went into this school year knowing that it might be a hard one, so I think we were right. And at many levels, if you talk to teachers, we hear them in team meetings, we hear them at PLC time. We know that this school year has been very challenging in terms of, and I tried to break it down for us, really school anxiety, relearning how to be a student, adjusting to our workload, adjusting to in-person learning, friendships, and navigating the general school experience, so something that many students did not do last year, particularly our sixth-grade students who were never part of our hybrid learning system. Coming to the middle school in seventh grade for the first time is difficult. And then having nothing in place for our middle schoolers when they were excluded. So that has really added to our workload issues with some of our students here at the middle school. We have responded with continuing to utilize our second-step curriculum in grades six through eight. This takes place through our social studies classrooms, just like it has always done in the past. In addition, we work with an outside agency. We work with YSE, which is the Youth Service Bureau. They are based out of DeKalb. They come in two days a week to see between nine and 10 students weekly for outside counseling services that take place in the school building. This is a free-of-charge service that we take advantage of, and the DeKalb County Mental Health Board is the one who funds this. In addition, we work as an MTSS team to address the behavioral issues and highlight some of our core values, such as integrity, respect for responsibility, and honesty. So in quarter two, we did a daily SEL video featuring those core values for two weeks leading up to our winter break. You can actually check them out on YouTube. All you have to do is search my name, Elizabeth Herkler, and you can have access to all of them. They were really fun to create, and I think the kids really enjoyed seeing them every day. We ended the quarter with a grade-level service project that required all students hands-on deck. So each grade level actually was given a place that they were going to collect items for. And then we utilized the cafeteria and had all the students in the grade level help pack the boxes and load the boxes into my car, and then I made the deliveries right before we went on break. It was actually a very cool experience, and service is really one of the best ways for us to teach that social-emotional level of those core values. In addition, we've responded to that workload and our excluded students with doing eighth-grade working lunches. Our eighth graders really had a hard time coming back in after being out for, you know, one time it was up to two weeks. So with so many of those kids struggling with workload, the counseling suite implemented a working lunch, where students can go to a classroom. I am in a science classroom every day, and they spend their lunches eating and working. It has been a super positive experience. Many students just continue to come back and utilize the time. It's also a really good way to teach that time management piece as they head into high school. In addition, we have been doing announcements during passing periods, so we're always trying to utilize every moment of the day that we can. And in social-emotional learning, there's often, the, the conversation stems around how do we fit it in? You know, where is it taught? And so we decided to use the passing period time to get some of those core value messages across. They're very simple reminders, rewarded with positive points. Teachers are all asked to stand out in the hallways when those announcements come on, and hand out positive points for students who are doing what they're supposed to be doing. So it has been a very cool thing. Our Spartan store continues to thrive. So over the course of three quarters, we have served nearly 800 students in the Spartan store. They have purchased, purchased their items with their positive points that they have earned for all of their positive, expected behaviors. It has been a super fun thing, hard to do in COVID times, because we have, you know, we can't have them gathering, so I do them individually. I, I package them all and get them out on the table. It's something that we believe in as an MTSS team, and the students have come to rely on utilizing those positive points in the store. In addition, we have groups being offered to general education students. This is not, I mean, this is something we've always done. But I think the thing to note here is that this year, we have had more than double the number of recommendations for both our processing and our executive functioning groups. That was a notable difference from previous years to this year. And that leads me to future conversations. So we are going to spend a little bit more time, MTSS team has already started talking about this, reteaching those school expectations at the beginning of the school year, and then working it in throughout. So I think a lot of students just came back from the pandemic, and some of those basic student skills were kind of lost along the way as they were trying to learn how to be a, a remote student. And so... And so spending the time to really teach those things again. We are exploring the use of circles and restorative justice through our classrooms and specifically in the dean's office. We are working with Mimi at the ROE on getting training for some people to be able to pass that training along. And we are going to start using, we have some teachers already using circles right now in their classrooms, and we hope to spread that through the school. Continuing to have the counseling team on the reminder point form for intervention purposes. I know that Mr. Drennan has talked to this before, but we are going to continue to do that so that we can see what students are struggling in real time. And then we are able to call those students down and say like, hey, what's up? I think today is just a hard day, how can we get through the rest of the day? So there are several things that we are doing to make sure that we are responding to and, and all purposes trying to be proactive as opposed to reactive to the students that we see coming into the classroom now, post-pandemic. Can I say post-pandemic yet? Maybe soon. Most of all, thank you for asking how things are going. If there's any other information you want or specifically want to talk about, I'm always happy to have that conversation with you. I think it's an important thing for all parties to know. And always, if there's other ideas or suggestions or ways that maybe you see how we should be addressing some of these things, we are always happy to have that conversation too. Thank you for your time, I-
And we, we do thank her, the counseling staff and our social workers. They do an awesome job with our students, and that is what we're doing for SEL. Onward to our next slide, which, get rid of the video. Ralph, can you go on to the next slide? These are our goals for our PLC coalition. We started the year with the, with these four goals, and we've pretty much completed the first three. We're working really hard on the last one down there. By the end of the first quarter, we wanted to have a plan created, which we do. We have a four-year plan now for our PLC coalition, and we're working with the staff to make sure PLC starts to flow really, really well. By the end of the first quarters, we wanted building norms, admission statement, a vision, a value statement. You saw those in the earlier slide. By the end of the first semester, we wanted all leadership committees and subcommittees within our building to have roles and responsibilities, and we have that out to our staff. And so by the end of the year, we would really love to have all of our essential standards lists and laid out for curriculum map. And we are going really well with that, we're just not complete yet, but we still have a little time. Another thing that we really look to is our commitment statements here. And so I have them here, I'm not going to read all of them to you word for word, but as Spartans, we believe that positive stories happen every day, and we want to make sure that we celebrate and appreciate those. We believe that modeling is the best way towards ensuring the culture. We believe innovation is the better way of thinking. We believe that failure, regardless of the scale, is often the best opportunity for growth. And you heard that in one of the little, the young author's story, I mean, it is true. One, some of the things that our students have learned through this pandemic is that we've had some students who had never had anything tough happen to them, who have worked through stuff that have really learned a lot more from failure than they probably would have of being students if everything would have been perfect for them. So I think they're going to be a lot more resilient that way. And I think we've really, we really think one of our commitment statements that over-communication is better than under-communication. The more we work with our staff, the, the better we are, we are coming with that. And I think this group puts in a ton of work, not because they, they think they have to, because they really believe in the PLC process, and they know that together, we are Spartans. And I'd just like to make a thank you out there to all the people here under that we listed here, our teachers, student service, nursing staff, paraprofessionals, technology staff, office staff, robbing a custodian for how well the building, how well it looks all the time, kitchen staff, students and parents. Just thank you to everybody, because this has been a very challenging last couple of years, but it's, it's a good time at the middle school, and I think we're doing a very nice job. And I'm so happy to see the kids back smiling, and thank you to all of you too. Questions?
Jim, when Mrs. Herkler was talking about circles under her SEL presentation, what, what are circles?
That I would probably have to get her to be more specific on, because I don't have the circles, but it is for the restorative justice type thing. So again, more of like a peer mediation type of work, but I don't have exactly describe it all out. I've yet to see it in action. It's something that we've really just started more toward third quarter.
It might be, it actually might be nice to have like a presentation on that.
I think once we get it running really well, then we could show how it works. Because I think right now we're still in the beginning phases, so give us a little bit of time and we'll, because now the meetings are moving back to the middle school, you'll have a lot more time. We can give you a nice little presentation on that.
Sure. The, the other thing she mentioned was the availability of groups for the general ed population. And I was just wondering if you have any more details that you can kind of flesh that out a little bit better?
Again, they're just starting with all those, it just depends on time and how many students will we get in each of the groups. But yeah, I mean, if we can find groups that fit, and some may be regular ads, some may be not, then we try to get everybody the help they need, because there, there are so many students that could use just somebody to listen to them.
Yeah, I, I think that's the kind of thing we were kind of interested in with SEL is, is really maybe getting down a little bit, another level or two to kind of find out, you know, what the programs are, but then, and then how, how the kids are interacting, the students are interacting with that.
At the middle school level, needing to be heard is one of the biggest things. And in this time, it's even more. So it doesn't matter whether you have services or not, they just need to be heard. So we try to build relationships with the teachers, but there's so much more we can do with counselors and social workers too. And outside agencies. This discipline, being punitive is not going to stop a lot of the problems, we have to find out what's causing the problem. Talking to them would help a lot.
Right, yeah, I, I, it would, you know, at some point, we should have some kind of a presentation on that, on, on SEL so that we can get a little bit deeper, and maybe as you suggest, that we need a little bit of lead time. We need some time to see how it works and how it's going. But I think that's the kind of things that we really wanted to hear about. And, and, and also what kind of problems are really manifesting themselves that we need these, we need these processes for?
Sure. Yeah, I'm sure it's not just at the middle school level, there's-
No, I, in fact, that's what I was thinking that we needed across the board, yeah.
Will there be an end of the year lemonade stand?
I'll, I'll ask. He hasn't done it in a couple of years, I'm sure he will want to be out there, well, a couple of them will want to be out there. I will let them know you mentioned it.
Please do, thank you.
There's a lot of activities we'd like to get started again.
Yep.
We've missed them for a few years.
Other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. And our thanks to your staff and, and your teachers, and let them know that they have our thanks, Jim. Next item then would be superintendent's report.
Good evening, everybody. Pleasure to be here, getting like you said, in front of a, a full house now. But actually it was, I do, just want to comment quickly, it's been some challenging board meetings over the, the two years that I've been here, but that, opportunities like that to smile and, and celebrate students, the work that they do, but also supported by our staff, you know, the teachers, the paraprofessionals, the administration. Pretty awesome evening tonight, so I am just down to one item on the agenda, which is the first one, and this is a future focused item, so just kind of some ideas. And the topic I picked this, this month was a staffing pattern. So sometimes I'm asked, you know, how do you, how do you identify staffing patterns, personnel decisions? This is my fourth district that I've worked in, and every district does it a little bit different, but there are some common threads that I'll talk about tonight. So again, just some general comments for discussion, some things that I believe in in terms of how, how we should do things, but just kind of overall. So there's a lot of resource in schools these days, technology, other, other programs and materials and, and equipment and things like that. But at the end of the day, the most important connection in schools really is between the teachers and the staff and the students. You can have a lot of other resources that really open a lot of doors, but still today, it's the connection between the staff and the students, and that impacts teaching and learning the most. For that reason, staffing decisions are critical, as well as from an administrative level and from a board level, balancing those decisions with the resources that are available to the district. This is not a surprise, I'm sure that you guys know this, and this is the fact in, in, in every school district that I know of. Personnel, salaries, wages and benefits are the largest part of any school district budget. That is teachers, paraprofessionals, administrative staff, custodians, kitchen staff, bus drivers, everybody who supports what we do, that's the biggest part of, of our budget every year. In Sycamore, that's about 73% based on most recent school report cards. So 73%, that comes from local taxpayers. So we get about 25% in, in state funding, a couple of percentage points in, in other funds, federal funds and grants. 73% of our funds come directly from our local taxpayers. So that's not the case in every district, but because that's such a high number here, I think it's really important that we balance the resources with the opportunities. My goal has always been to maximize opportunities for students in a way that allows the district to maintain financial integrity. In other words, how can we get the biggest bang for our buck? And how, how can we deliver the biggest bang for taxpayers' buck and, and the biggest opportunities for our students? So how do we go about doing that, or how do schools in general go about doing that? There are several guidelines that can, that can guide staffing decisions. Sometimes we talk about a student to teacher ratio, sometimes that's a target that we kind of shoot for. That can vary by grade level, you might have a, a lower ratio for, for lower grades where students need, you know, they're younger students, they're still learning, they need a little bit more support versus some of the high school classes. Can also vary by content area, so, and some special education classes, because of the supports that we provide for students and the needs that they have, the student to teacher ratio is, is a little bit smaller. If you walk into a PE class at almost every level, those tend to be some of the largest classes in, in any school at any level. While targets can be used, they're, they're best used as guides, not, not hard and fast, because other factors can impact those staffing decisions, such as the needs of individual students in classrooms, specific programs, staffing availability, I'll talk about that a little bit more, as well as value added. So I wasn't quite sure how to, how to phrase value added and what I mean by that. The value added in the program itself and what students get out of that, but I've always believed that school districts should reflect of the values of the community. And each community tends to vary a little bit. So what's important in Sycamore may value, or may differ from what's important in DeKalb and, and other area districts. May vary, it will vary from this part of the state to other parts of the state or other part of the country, parts of the country. I always think that our, our, our school district should reflect the values of the community, and that bleeds through in some of the programs that we offer and, and how we go about staffing those. So it's not just what students get out of the programs that we offer, but it's also what the community values and what we provide. Paraprofessionals are often hired to provide additional staff for specific needs. Younger students require additional support on a, from firsthand experience. I had an opportunity to be in a kindergarten classroom a couple of weeks ago, and I can tell you firsthand that if there weren't paraprofessionals in that classroom, those students would have struggled dealing with me all day. So just to have extra hands in the classroom helping out, it can be a huge help. Again, that varies by grade level, by content area, by, by program. So and sometimes instead of a student to teacher ratio, we, sometimes we talk about a student to adult ratio or student to adult targeted ratio. There are limits and caps in special education staffing patterns, so what kind of caseloads can special education teachers have? Years ago, when I got into education and administration, that was a hard number. So resource teachers could have 20 students on their caseload, regardless of what needs those students have. Over the years, that's changed, so that number can vary a little bit based on the needs of the individual students. So special education teachers who have students with greater needs, the number of students on their caseload tends to be a little bit lower. Speech pathologists tend to have a higher caseload, but that's because they spend shorter kind of periods of time with students. So while that does vary a little bit, there are limits on, on special education staffing patterns that comes from the Department of Ed at the federal level, as well as the State Board of Education. Other things that can impact staffing patterns, this tends to, to be part of future conversations about what our staffing patterns look like, you know, restructuring programs as time goes on, nothing, although schools are sometimes justifiably criticized for being slow-moving and slow-changing, change does happen, so as programs are restructured, that's typically going to impact staffing to some degree. Reimagining what we do in schools, and I think we're kind of on the cusp of that. I was hoping we were on the cusp of that a year ago, as we were coming, I was hoping that we were coming out of COVID. Didn't quite, wasn't quite the case. But as I mentioned at the last board meeting, I hope that, that we look back in February and some of the decisions that we made and realize that we were really coming out of the pandemic. So as we reimagine what schools can look like, that will obviously impact staffing patterns as well. And one of the things that could impact us here locally are decisions that are based on redistricting. So as we look at those elementary boundaries in the fall, as we engage in that study, as those, those boundary lines may move or redistricting may occur, that's obviously going to have some impact on staffing too. May not necessarily be the overall number, but it may be where, where staff is assigned, based on changes in student population. So this kind, this times, this comes at kind of a timely part of the year. Winter and spring are times that we're, we're developing the budget for the next year. And at that time, that, that is where we're considering changes in staffing patterns. So it's a really timely topic, I was surprised that it came up. This is the time of year that we're evaluating requests from within the district, monitoring changes to programs and planning for known retirements and resignation. So as we know that there are vacancies, we're filling those vacancies. We're, I, I think it's appropriate to always ask, you know, what's the need, what does that look like? So as we're hiring staff, we know that we're continuing to do that for the right reasons. Some of those are kind of no brainers, you know, when you have a classroom teacher that's retiring, typically you need to replace those teachers, especially at the lower levels. Sectioning and, and how students sign up for courses at the, the high school level in specific can, can impact staffing a little bit, so we keep that in mind. Staffing does, or course requests do change a little bit to middle, middle school, but my experience with middle school schedules is that they're not quite as fluid and flexible as maybe a high school schedule is, but a little bit more flexibility and opportunity for students to choose at, than, than K5. One of the other things that we need to keep in mind is that there is a very real shortage of staff right now. Teachers, paraprofessionals, bus drivers, we have a host of positions that have been posted for, for most of the school year that still are unfilled right now. I, I hope that that will get better as we come out of the pandemic, and some of the staff who maybe were reluctant to come back feel more comfortable coming back. However, I don't anticipate an avalanche of, of candidates for positions that we have open. So that staffing shortage and how that may change over time is something that we need to keep an eye on. And as I mentioned there, that we have to, to keep an eye on, that is an ongoing issue. Some of those staffing challenges have been slowly kind of developing over time. The bus driver shortage is probably the, the best example, kind of seen that coming for, for quite some time. Teacher shortage has been coming kind of gradually over time. Everything really was brought to the forefront when the pandemic hit. So we'll continue to keep an eye on those things. Just wanted to talk a little bit tonight about how staffing decisions can be made and a little bit about my philosophy, but would be glad to answer any questions or open it up for discussion.
Questions? All seem to make sense.
This tends to be, this tends to not be an area where there are drastic changes on a year-to-year basis, right? These are kind of more subtle changes that we keep an eye on, but because there are changes over time, just something I thought I'd bring up tonight.
So what have we been seeing as far as collegiate graduates in education? Like out of Illinois State or Northern or U of I or, you know, regional areas that might come to this area? Have their, have, I'm sure- Have there, I'm sure there have been fewer people enrolling and fewer people graduating, but has that's been a continuous trend, or we've just kind of seen a dip? Is it cyclical that every so many years, you see an up and a down? Are you tracking any of that?
I, I don't have hard numbers to reflect this, but I'm most familiar with Western Illinois, Illinois State, becoming more familiar with Northern. I've heard a little bit about Eastern and how that's progressed there. We've seen a, a gradual decline in the number of students coming out of those teacher education programs. That's been coming for, for quite some time. So we've kind of been monitoring that. Of all the legislation that was proposed, there's some teacher shortage bills or bills that were intended to impact teacher shortage that, that have been proposed. Extending time for retirees to be able to work and still, you know, keep their pension, things like that. My greatest concern is that we ask so much of teachers. We ask so much of administrators and paraprofessionals and, and everybody in education. But the mandates, the things that they do beyond the teaching and learning that goes on in the classroom, and some of those, some of those things that teachers do are, are things that they want to do, supporting students and, and asking how they're doing and things like that. I wonder what the teacher shortage might look like if we started to roll back some of the things that we require teachers to do that are on top of the things that they got into education to do. So that's my short 60-second soapbox speech. One of the other things that I've also seen over the last couple of years in talking with folks at the university level is that not, we're not just seeing a teacher shortage. We're seeing an administrator shortage. So just a couple of years ago, I sat in a meeting with the president of the Illinois Principals Association, who described one of the universities that I mentioned earlier, who, who always was flush with candidates coming in, teachers getting their administrative degree. There was finally a semester where they had zero applicants for their principal preparation program. So we're not only seeing that in, in teachers, we're seeing that in administrators as well. So as we have vacancies for all of our positions, that's another area that we need to keep an eye on. But seeing that declining enrollment in those programs, a declining number of students coming out of those programs, and I don't see that changing drastically in the near future.
I wonder what historically it has been. If you, I mean, look really back at like major events relative to, I mean, I, I can understand for a number of reasons why someone wouldn't want to go into teaching. You know, having been through two years of a pandemic, the number of mandates, the number of things a, a teacher and/or administrator has to do that it really has, in my opinion, very little to do with education, you know, those types of things. But I wonder, you know, a lot of things are cyclical. I wonder if there's trends back there that would give us a projection on. I would think that would be something like a Northern or an Illinois State would want to do a study on and say, what, you know, let's go back to the pandemic of 1918 and what happened there. Was there, is there any correlation? There may not be, but you know, that might give us a projection or give the industry, let's say, a projection on, you know, we can anticipate that generation, it's going to take 10 years to come out of this, or two years to come out of this, or just wondering.
Yeah, it's a, it's a good question to ask. I'll reach out to folks at, at Northern. I've got some connections still at Illinois State University and can ask that question. You know, one of the great things about educate, being an educator is that it allowed you some flexibility. You know, you weren't kind of tied to an area. If you, if you had a spouse that moved, that, that had a job opportunity that, that allowed you to move, or you just wanted to travel and live in a different area, you could find a teaching job. I think one of the challenges, I read an article recently, that one of the challenges is going to be that this younger generation coming out of college. There are a lot of job opportunities where they're afforded a lot more flexibility than jobs used to offer. You know, when, when I was coming out of school, that you were, you were still looking at a nine-to-five type of job in an office is, is pretty standard. And today, that's not the case. You know, large companies, smaller companies, there's a lot more working-from-home opportunities. Had a conversation with a relative recently, and he, he works in the office about once a week. His, his spouse works in the office about once a month. And so the private sector is now offering opportunities that are really appealing for a younger generation, that really, could we do that in education? Yes. I think we could get to that point. And I think we've seen that with the pandemic, you know, the remote learning. And while there was room for improvement there, it was something that I, I think schools started to get to a little bit. The other issue, however, in schools, we heard about this, have heard about this over the years, is that for parents who were going to work, they needed a place for their students to go and, and be supervised. So there, there is this kind of childcare aspect to, to education. And with the changing face of what, you know, a corporate kind of environment might look like or the office environment might look like, those parents who are working from home, it's going to be difficult to have students home as well. You know, I, I think parents, for many stories from parents who talked about how difficult it was to work from home, and then make sure that their students were learning from home at the same time during the pandemic. So could we do that? I, I, I think we could. Is that going to be the best for our community? Or, or, in communities in general? I don't know. Schools still serve a variety of purposes.
Steve, to your point, I think you really hit the nail on the head with expectations in terms of just the rising expectations for staff. At least, I mean, I don't know if pandemic or no pandemic, as more legislation rolls through, at least in the public sector, it seems like, I, I can't imagine the shortages any other reason, but the increasing level of expectations for these staff members. And so for me, like, I'm just racking my brain going, how do you solve? How do you still appeal to that group? And then you also touched on a really interesting point, which was the private sector offers this flexible work culture. And so for me, that like, that kind of anthem of culture, I think is huge. And so I think that, that districts that rebound and really reinforce a strong culture among their staff, however you do that, I think that's going to be the ticket to attracting talent. Because I think this new, I think just the new labor pool at large, they're interested in, in how much they can make, and they're interested in the terms of their work. But more than anything, I think culture is going to be a, a rising priority. So I can only hope that Sycamore, be it as a community, has an amazing culture. Our school districts, hopefully, like you talk about, values reflecting our community. I hope our school districts can keep up with that growing pace for culture. So that's just my opinion on it.
I think those are good points.
Other questions or comments? Thank you, and we'll move on to open discussion and future agenda items. Issues, discussion, observations, questions?
Just a reminder, we're supposed to have, was it three to five SMART goals by spring break?
Well, the initial, the initial request was to put together some insights and some visions and to communicate those. Kathy's got us, I think, going to send out an email requesting those. And just, just simple kind of concept, quick ideas, just to see what commonality we have, or if we have any commonality. I think we will. And then we're going to do a board workshop where we'll start to work on, on actually putting those into goals then. But if we do some advanced work and start putting together some of these concepts before that workshop, we should be a little bit better prepared for the workshop. Future agenda items? Hopefully, at some point, we'll have a, a more in-depth report on SEL programs across the district. Maybe when we see, you know, how they start to work, maybe that's something for, maybe even for the summertime or, you know, just when school's letting out. So we have a better idea of how those programs are fitting in. Other future agenda items or anything like that? Is there a motion to go into executive session for the consideration of matters related to the appointment, employment or dismissal of personnel, matters related to individual students, negotiations and imminent litigation?
So moved.
Moved and seconded. Roll call?
Shiloh?
Yes.
Davy?
Yes.
DeVito?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Ren?
Yes.
Dombek?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, we'll enter into executive session, and then we'll return for our final votes. Okay, we're back in regular session. Is there a motion to approve the personnel report as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Roll call?
DeVito?
Stain.
Jones?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Ren?
Yes.
Shiloh?
Yes.
Davy?
Yes.
Dombek?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.